Hang on. Okay, can you hear now? There we go. Now you can hear, oh, you you missed out, oh, you missed out on a really good rant. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I was talking about how I'm drinking recess. And this is the soft drink for rich people. Oh, you know, you just got, you just gotta, you just gotta have seen the whole rant and it like makes fun of status oriented people. And you know, but it's okay if it's you're having a good time, but when you're having a bad time, you start to take it seriously, you're a loser. But if you're laughing about it, look, if you got a rapper with a big gold chain around his neck being like, look man, I got a big gold chain. Yeah, that's funny, but then if you have someone who's like, you know, concerned about somebody else's gold chain, they were loser, that's right. So hopefully you all understand what I'm saying. Good morning, good morning, good morning, good morning, yo. No, we'll get to we'll get to that in a bit. Alright, so we're here to study bio today. You heard of the Odin? I like this guy. He's selling, he's selling, uh, I bought this kit. Hopefully it'll get here soon and we can do some of it on stream. Um, he sounds like a kit to do like CRISPR at home. Happy New Year, Happy New Year. Come buy our bag of business, yeah, maybe. So let's look at their. So you can modify yeast or you can modify E coli, they have like kits for it. Oh, I also bought, I bought my Nebula Genomics. Um, I bought, I bought my my, I bought this. Uh, but I didn't send it back yet, cause there were a lot of instructions and it looked long, but I actually do have this little box. Uh, sitting in my office at Commerce. Who we beefing with today? Alright, we're always beefing with Drake, um. Also. Uh. I am, I am absolutely appalled. Uh, I'm so happy we don't use AWS. Uh, I am appalled that they, uh. You know, they they banned Parler. Uh, and they kicked them off, they kicked them off of AWS, look. Your Twitter, you wanna ban someone from Twitter? Totally fine. But how appalling is that, that the infrastructure people think they're gonna try to control the internet, I'm appalled. Fuck AWS, seriously. You know, look. Twitter wants to ban people? That's fine. Because they're like, you you just, you get it, it's like, it's like Twitter, it's like Twitter's brand, right? Like they're showing up on a Twitter page and you can argue that it's an endorsement and their publishers arguments, but there's no excuse for AWS, that is appalling. That is, that is like cutting off someone's electricity. Uh, who you don't, uh. You know, you don't, you don't like what they have to say, so you cut off their electricity, that's appalling. Um, no, we're on Azure and if they do similar stuff. I'm happy to, you know. Uh, I I will, I will move and I will pay a premium for a company that doesn't do bullshit like that, it's appalling. What's certified lover boy? No, look. Twitter wants to ban Trump, you could argue that might have been overdue. That might have been overdue. But, but, you know, AWS. Oh, build an alternative, oh, but you can't, cause we control the internet. Buck off with your internet controlling shit, but all this is gonna do is accelerate the great decentralized word of crypto world of crypto. Um, honestly, yeah, if you work, if you work at Amazon for AWS. I I I would quit a company over that. Uh, Curtis wrote a really good new piece, it was something, it is possible for the ruling class to be really shitty and for you to be worse. Stop the counter shit, you know, it's it's possible. It is possible for the ruling class to suck donkey balls and you to actually be worse. When are we gonna have decentralized AWS, that's a good question. Yeah, you just got a lesson why you need to move it exactly. If if your company, if your company using AWS, you just got a lesson, they they're they're willing to. You know, they're willing to do that and this is, this is not. You know, this is not the Daily Stormer, right? Okay, but then, you know, this is Parler, that's that's appalling. Oh, by the way, so if you guys, I dropped a a new rap song. Uh, make sure to go to my SoundCloud and listen to the rap song. Yeah, it's called, it was not called the Civil War because people were civil. Um, in some ways, it's kind of a follow up to it was called the Cold War because Russia is cold. But you know, a little more abstract and a little more like this is what I did with the. This is what I did with. The six years of my life from eighteen to twenty four. Uh, and this is what I did with the six years of my life from like twenty four to thirty. Uh, my audio is lagging behind my camera. Uh. I don't know what to tell you. I can like try to reinit it. Lower the resolution, maybe that'll work better. Better? Mic vol too low. Alright, alright, we're up in the mic vol, is that better? Can you hear me now? Alright, cool. Yo, we smashed Kanye's waifu, I I hear they're getting a divorce, is this true? Uh. But yeah, uh, in conclusion, in in the fuck you who we beefing with today, we're beefing with AWS. Uh, again, if there's not really truth to that, but you know, again, your Twitter, you wanna kick people off, that's great. Your banner says Twitter, you don't want their brand associated with your brand, that's great, but nobody can tell who's hosting your infrastructure. Get off the centralized infrastructure, we need to decentralize boys, we need to decentralize. Uh, also go to my SoundCloud and check out this, this, I made a new song, it's a long song, so you know, I put a lot of effort into these. Uh, also check out my Instagram and if you don't follow me on Instagram, make sure to follow me on Instagram, my name is George Hot, I'm a reformed cybercriminal. And here's a convenient link to my my SoundCloud. Boxing infrastructure, I was thinking about this morning, see, this is what I was thinking about, I was like, what if somebody took Twitter? And copied it exactly, but decentralized the backend. Uh, that's the, you know, that's what I'd like to see done. Or in general with all these tech companies, they should. Uh, you, once you get to a certain size, you have to provide APIs. Right, like we, that's, that's the new section two thirty law. Like you 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 have to provide APIs and someone else can stick a new front end on your service. Um, how would you decentralize AWS? Well, so it's just computers, right? Like what you would wanna do is you wanna build a template data centers. Alright, so that anybody could stand up at data center, kinda like fleet operators with Uber. If Parler made any threats, I I take back what I said, but I don't think so, right, again. You know, a company that doesn't moderate, regardless, regardless, I just. This is, this is, this is like when the credit card companies crack down on Pornhub, it's appalling. It is, it is appalling. Um, that these companies who own infrastructure think they can make decisions about what can or can't be said and like. It's not like Twitter, Twitter is a publisher by a lot of means, right? New York Times can absolutely decide what they wanna put on their thing, but when Visa and Mastercard decide they'll no longer process credit card payments for Pornhub? That's appalling. The WikiLeaks, they did the WikiLeaks too, like this, this, this deep platforming at the infrastructure level. Um. We need, we need, we need decentralized infrastructure. Bitcoin is the future of money, boys, Bitcoin is the future of money, who's getting rich, who in here is getting rich? Who's getting rich, oh shit, boys, we rich! We so rich! Holy shit, we rich! Oh yeah, holy shit, USD down, BCT up, BTC up. Oh shit, we rich, man. Oh, my eats, oh, my eats, oh fuck, I didn't even realize I was eat rich, holy shit! Holy shit, yo, we rich, boys, we rich! We rich, we rich. And then of course, this great cryptocurrency, that's a great cryptocurrency. Bitcoin, they should have just called it Bitcoin. This is the soft drink, this is the soft drink of Bitcoin millionaires, boys. I don't have any crypto, I'm a note coiner, I just like, you know, like, like participating and I have like, you know. Maybe I have like point zero zero one Bitcoin and I made like ten bucks, yeah, cool. I've never been on Parler, I had no plans to go on Parler, but when I see companies, when I see these, these. Infrastructure companies. Who, it's decentralized infrastructure, it's not a social network. Deciding that, you know, they don't wanna host. Like, you know, it's, it's like, it's like, uh. It's it's discrimination. It's you can, you know. It's, it's like if I have a business and decide I don't like one group of people and, you know, I'm not gonna sell to them. It's appalling. No place in the modern world. Pine Piper. Got it on ETH early, yeah. Thoughts on Twitch, and again, these pieces are social networks, they can run their social network however they want, there's plenty of competition in the social networking space. You know, if if one social network. Moderation's a hard problem and like, you know, I don't really blame people for moderation choices, but again, that's moderation from other people on your network seeing. Right? Yeah, it's like cutting water electricity. Oh yes, so this is a bio study session, I've been, I've been studying, boys, I've been studying, I've been reading my. Uh, I actually bought a physical copy of this book. Gets here on Monday. So. Here's kinda what I'm thinking, it's the new, it's the new in the companies, right? Like, you know, uh, so you look at Backspace, hey, let's see if Backspace is still up. Um, so I work on Backspace, I worked on Backspace a lot, the problem with Backspace. Is. Like. This is what every IDE is already trying to be. There's already a lot of money being thrown at this problem. Um, it also doesn't have this. When I think about, when I think about what kind of, uh, stuff I wanna work on. I think about things that are actually going to change the course of history. Right? If you are, if you are marching, if you work in a hedge fund, you're never gonna change the course of history, no matter how much money you make. Right, because you're, you're continuing trends that already exist. Uh, so you can take comma. Um, and and comma is a bit different. Uh. comma, if comma succeeds. This is actually going to, I do not wanna live in a world where, well, Waymo decides, oh, oh, Waymo decides, oh, they don't like you, oh, they don't like, they don't like what you have to say. Oh yeah, hmm, let's see, uh, yeah, no more going anywhere for you. Oh, and we also do the food delivery services, so yeah, no more getting food delivered, right, I don't wanna live in these shitty worlds. Um, who said I'm six, I'm six foot? Six foot, six feet tall, that's right, that's right, six feet, that sounds nice. Um. So. Oh yes. By the way, you know, someone was saying like, like if they needed, uh. Someone was saying on Twitter, like, oh, optimism, they can't be that good if they needed George to help them with something. They're one of the best teams I've met in crypto. I've met a lot of crypto teams who are absolute morons and know nothing. Optimism knows what they're doing and I think they're gonna have a successful launch. Um. You know, again, with all these things, uh, infrastructure is never good in the zero point one version. Wait for it to roll out for a few years, but yeah, I think. It's a well thought out L two solution. Uh, yeah, so Backspace doesn't work because there's already a lot of companies and people working toward exactly this goal. Um, Hammer doesn't work. Oops. Um, first off, a lot of people didn't get the troll with Hammer. Uh, Hammer was only, uh, seeking an application for a founder because I wanted someone else to start Hammer. Uh, if someone did, seriously, I'll give you the domain name, um. The problem with Hammer is Google is actually already returning the best results. Uh, most people want news ads and SEO spam. Now, not SEO spam, but most people want ads. And it's a sad truth about people. Uh, oh my god, the news, people want news, I don't want any new, I don't want any page. Uh, you know, when I was looking for truth in the coronavirus stuff, you can't look at any of the science that just came out, it's all bogus. Right, give it, give it five years. Um, ooh, 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 enzyme dot MIT dot edu, let's see, what is it? I thought it was bio related, cause this is a bio study session, by the way. Uh, if you guys don't follow me on Instagram, make sure to follow me on Instagram, and if you guys don't listen to my rap songs, uh, make sure to listen to my my rap songs. Yeah. Um. So Hammer doesn't work because Google's actually already returning the best results, uh, I don't think I ever actually made a website for it. But Pixi Tech doesn't work because Apple already won AR, uh, we just don't know it yet. Um. Again, my rap name is Tom Cruise. Uh. What do we do today, we're gonna study some bio? So yeah, this is, um, the Odin. These people look like they're up in Oakland and they make DIY bio kits. Uh, you could actually do some sick stuff, um, here's, here's a project that's actually within reach of biohackers. Uh, you could probably get yeast to synthesize morphine. Um, yeast synthesize morphine. Complete biosynthesis of opioids in yeast, ooh, now if you could make that. Turn a sugar into morphine, eh? Um. The resulting opioid biosynthesis required expression of. Thibane and hydrocodone, oh, they make it Vicodin. I read a few of these papers, but they just stopped at, uh, they stopped at Thibane. Thibane is not really a controlled substance, it was spontaneous. Look, you just, you take these genes and you stick these genes in the yeast. Oh, it turns L-tyrosine into hydrocodone, I see. But L-tyrosine looks a lot like amphetamine. Yeah, so if that's L-tyrosine. No, hmm, no, maybe not. Okay, nevermind, it doesn't look that much like it. Wow. Should see sugar to synthesize L-tyrosine, L-tyrosine's in like Monster Energy Drink, you know, you see that shit. Um. The great courses biochemistry, turn yeast into Adderall, we don't turn the yeast into Adderall, you get the yeast to turn sugar into Adderall, you know? You could build a drug three D printer. Is that allowed to say? How lo- how long before they cracked out, man? Is free speech over? I don't know. Or is free speech only, uh, you know, I'm not, uh, do I offend the political class if I wanna, you know, synthesize opiates out of yeast? Does that offend the political class? Yeah, 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 I read, I watched the Spider beer thing, I don't think it really worked that well. Which uses AWS again. You know, again, if I had a company, I would switch off AWS, cause that's like the first they came for, man. Like first they came for like, you know, the Daily Stormer and, you know, no one said anything, there's like really fucking Nazis, who likes Nazis, nobody. Um, and then, ooh. Ooh, is this an automatic pipetting machine? But like, you know, really, they came for, they came for Pornhub, you know, they came, and now Pornhub is shittier. It's true, Pornhub now only has the verified videos on it anymore, so I go to Xvideos, real talk. Um. Pornhub is so bad now. And like they give in to these companies who really shouldn't have the power to do this. Um, yeah, no, I, you know, just, it just made me reconsider my choices and where to look for porn. Oh my god, the porn is bad, people, oh yeah, yeah, no fat November, man. Oh, here it, this is cool, it's actually open source. Our apps, protocols and hardware are publicly available. Oh shit, man, I want one of these, I don't wanna pipet anything. This is gonna pipet for me. I'm interested. Do I have to contact sales or do they tell me the prices? Order online. Ooh, holy shit, I'm gonna buy one of these. No, I'm not gonna buy that much yet, first I have to learn to pipet. But then. Oh man. It's a pick and place machine for pipetting. When they said rethink your life, I don't think they meant change porn sites, look, I didn't wanna change porn sites, but they forced my hand, man. How come we're studying bio, cause look at the things you can do with bio. No, here's why we're studying bio, right, we're not actually, we're not actually trying to make morphine, you know, um. Uh. Bio is a whole. There used to be this dream of three D printing and the dream of three D printing said that three D printers were gonna make everything. Alright, and this isn't true because three D printers only print plastic and not everything can be made out of plastic, I can't even, you know. Make this beautiful Andrew Yang hat out of plastic, right, a plastic Andrew Yang hat would be, would be no one near as good as as this real cloth Andrew Yang hat, alright? I gotta pee up there. It's not an endorsement of Andrew Yang, I just have the hat, you know? Uh, thoughts on the RNA vaccine? Um, yeah, they look like they work. Uh, there was, there's some really cool things, uh, I I linked them in my Corona reveal. Um, some guy reverse engineered the, uh, the. The vaccine, this is actually what got me rethinking about bio again. Um, so yeah, you can download this, uh. Doc file, it's a doc doc file from the World Health Organization and it contains, um. The whole sequence for the vaccine, you see these things, they're, I don't know what Greek letter that is, but it's a, uh, it's a fake U. They did something on it so your body doesn't attack the foreign mRNA. Talks about it here. Um, I don't know. Again, with all, with all new bio things, I'm gonna. I'm gonna wait a year, uh, if I was higher risk for coronavirus. I would, uh, I'd probably get it. Um, but. I'll wait a year before I trust it, if I was, if I was, if I was like fifty five plus, maybe forty five plus, I'd get it. It's the modified stable nucleotide. What's, what are these different pipettes? Wait. Are you telling me it can only pipet one size? It can only pipet a fixed amount? No, why are they different ones? Why would anyone wanna P twenty when you can get a P one thousand for the same price? Oh, it's different sizes, I see. Accuracy. Wait. Is that fifteen percent? It's kind of appalling. Oh yes, you gotta discard the tip, I was watching some videos of people doing bio protocols. I can't believe, I can't believe the amount of pipetting, that's what I said on Lex. Like I'm not pipetting shit. But now, I mean, it's like a CNC machine. So I probably have to like carefully wind everything up, I mean, it is just a pick and place machine, but you know the problems with pick and place machines, what else do we got? Oh, I got a thermocycler. Temperature module. I can hold my reagents at given temperatures. Oh, and then I, I see, I stick these modules so I can, does it automatically open and close? So I can like have it move, I can have the pipetter move the thingy into the. Everything you need for NGS library prep. What is NGS? Next generation sequencing, oh. I see, so I can prepare for sequencing, so there's also these, uh. Uh, ion pore sequencing. I'm gonna buy one of these too. Yeah, nano port tech, I I'm moving into a real. Yeah nano port tech I I'm moving into a real apartment where I'm gonna have a lot of space. To start doing some bio experiments yeah look I can buy min ions these guys I'll buy one of those. It really is this really this thing really looks like a three D printer. Minolly Kegless on Lex Friedman comp bio guy. Well he's been on Lex Friedman a lot. You guys are great you know I love having you guys here for bio cuz some of you know more about bio than me. They do they really taught biology terribly in school. Before you start with manufacturing tech don't I need a way to verify and test my experiments yeah what's can I buy good microscopes? There's gotta be some good ones now where I don't have to stick my eye up to a little stupid thing. And I can use the uh the Odin was recommending one. I first wanna like replicate these experiments that they've been doing. Um so yeah yeah I bought this includes pipettes. Um include a CRISPR kit bio sensors kit. H P L C is what I need. I want yeah there's a few guests I wanna I wanna chromatography machine I want a DNA sequencer machine and I want a DNA synthesis machine you could like there's like DNA printer machines and you can buy them. And like they're not that expensive. Oh yeah for some reason my eBay is in Mexico no I think it won't because I cleared everything. Yeah check it out. Look what I can buy. I can print my own DNA. Is that the inside of the thing? Is it just a fancy pipetting machine? Hardly use check video let's see the video. Yeah I know I wanna do P C R um that's apparently pretty easy like you can buy these thermocyclers for very cheap. The Odin is selling refurbished thermocyclers. Get one no that's a centrifuge. Here we go buy a red gene cycle right. It's a sick of reflow oven you know we have reflow ovens we have pick and place machines like we have all this stuff at work. Yeah they charge an arm and leg for the ink oh it's a razor and blades. I can't take that free that copyright free music. What I really wanna figure out is how these things work. Okay so here's my dream here's my what do you mean why would I be on a watch list I'm just trying to synthesize like kidding I'm kidding I wanna I wanna you know learn about bio that's the thing though. Imagine. You could build one of these. But cheap. Oh I wanna I I used to be I used to be on their serious watch list they used to fuck with my electronics when I crossed the border and I'm like bro like I hack iPhones for people. I don't I don't like you know go work with terrorists who the fuck you think I am man? Oh a thousand viewers sweet. Nintendo had me on the watch oh my god. Was that even me was Bob underscore me is that what they were trying to say I don't know. Dude I don't care fuck with me man what do you what do you what do you want what do you want you wanna take away my plant? Wanna smart water here they got the feds can come and they can seize my point two liters of smart water? Point two five liters of smart water that's right come seize my ship bro. I also wanna say smart water is um is the best water. Alright so let's figure out how these things work. I just imagine we could build one of these but cheap and imagine we could build one that produces its own ink. Right you just put sugar in you type the DNA sequence you want and you get that DNA sequence out. Oh thank you. Um oh by the way if we got new people in here please please check out my music on SoundCloud it's my real dream in life to be a rapper uh you know you know so just just go to my my SoundCloud it's my real dream in life uh. Days like the government's gonna take this video they're gonna be like yo we're coming in here we're checking for any yeast that can make opiates. Um and I'm like no they don't make opiates they just make more yeasts. They make like the real dream is a printer that can turn software that you can type out DNA in a new programming language and then it can make you organisms that do the stuff. Right? Cuz yeast is cheaper yo why don't you guys make lead out of gold yeah turn gold into lead. That's playing God hey you know who are we today who are we today? Um alright so you're telling me the ink is expensive? Bio XP. Oh they have the new one oh it's got a little tired of waking weeks for orders let's chat can I order? Do they have a price online I hate when they don't have prices online oh this is probably one of those things yeah you gotta contact do I need like a synthetic genomes. Services build genes. What are clones? When people say build clones I'm thinking like little marijuana clippings. Codex DNA provides the industry leading turnaround time at an unbelievable price for base pack. No but this is I wanna buy the little box. Alright here we go let's check out the user guide for this thing so there's one of these on eBay. You know what else I saw on eBay was super expensive Charzards and I'm like I got a Charzard somewhere. Uh here we go. Blah 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 control your time okay 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 boring 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 this is like what okay here's the user guide anything good? This is so useless. No but like meantime between failure it Imagine you had a printer that could print five hundred pages that's what this shit is. Supports applications from building cloning and amplifying gene fragments. And they don't make errors much that's cool. Wait so this actually looks like I can buy a DNA printer. But then I like look at the thing and I'm like it looks like like I've seen kind of how these things work. Is there is there a chapter in my in my textbook about this? Analyzing cells. Most current methods rely on prior knowledge of the nucleotide sequence really? Is that right? Oh most current methods of manipulating I see. Bio is the ultimate legacy codebase you see one of the problems I have with bio is whenever I'm reverse engineering some computer thing I know that I'm probably smarter than the guy who built that. Uh you know. I don't think I'm smarter than God. DNA clones that correspond to a sequence of mRNA molecules are the same except that a DNA copy of the mRNA sequence called C D N A is first made. C D N A clones lack intron sequences. So this is all just like the you know linking and copy and paste crap. It's a DNA library. How do I lace a cell? Oh I put him in a blender I get it cells blend blend. It's heating within a sample. Don't wanna denature my proteins. See it's like this kind of stuff you know I took organic chemistry in college because I wanted to learn like lab techniques for organic chemistry and instead I had to memorize a lot of naming and I dropped organic chemistry because it was clear that they weren't gonna teach me anything cool for a year or useful remotely useful. Who cares what it's called just look at the picture man. If I need to figure out which one's the two or which one's the four you know what is this like some like some like hazing are they hazing people before you get to learn? Yeah. Is that C M U I took organic chemistry I guess was it was it or was it R I T it's C M U. The thing about patent infringement is you know who's gonna come to my lab and sequence my DNA nobody fuck off with your patents. Magnetic particle imaging we gotta order food soon too. Particle imaging. I don't know about this. She isn't exactly CRISPR is more like you know uh L D preload. The whole biology is built around pipetter. There has to be a better way to do all this. You know thi- this makes me question the whole thing imagine like instead of having linkers you just like you manually went into a hex editor every time you wanted to like you know link a binary how much of software do you think would work then? And then you of course have to do this every time it's not like you've linked the software and then can copy it the software sent around unlinked. I don't I don't even know what I'm looking for here we're trying to figure out how DNA printers work. You know pretty sure they're I've seen these too I've seen these for sale on eBay. Yeah check it out. Look what I can buy oh I want one. DNA RNA synthesizer. Yeah so I think the inks is the ink really actually expensive this looks so fancy. But like then you look at it and it's like Theronos just build a shitty pipetting machine? Not with the Edison laws? Yo can I buy the name Theronos? How much is the rights to the name Theronos if I started a bio company I'd love to name it Theronos. What's an oligo anyway? Oligonucleotides are short Synthesis more specifically solid phase chemical synthesis. The chain goes in the three to five direction so that's backwards. Desalted or sometime even purified. Desalting an oligo removes the salts. See that's a crappy number of bases. I don't want that many bases I want a lot of bases. So they made a synthetic bacteria. Like We don't need to go that far I think let's just look at like um let's go to the Odin and then look at whatever they're including. Like I wanna be able to print the things that go in without having to buy them. Oh they have a frog kit too I was looking at. Geese transformation kit yeah. Oh with a plasmid that you provide it doesn't include the plasmid. So we learned what plasmas were last time. Plasmas. Okay, so that's about that's that's like, you know, multiplied by two, so it's ten K of code. Very reasonable, very reasonable, you know? My printer should be able to print out ten K of code. I watched a Thor important thought important video. Uh, no, this is not what I want. We wanna figure out why, how but how long can they these ones synthesize? Synthesis length. Hmm, one point eight kilobases, right? Alright, we're just gonna have to, you know what? I'm I'm not gonna translate these into kilobytes. We just need a name for, 'cause the biology bit is four. Uh. It's four, but it has a lot of redundancy in it. Let's just work it out. So if there's twenty amino acids and there's sixty four codons coding for it, every three codes for twenty. Every three bits codes for twenty. When it can code for up to sixty four. Normally every three bits can only code for eight. It is a scam. Um, alright, you know what? Let's just say with compression, let's just call it five point three K. Okay. Can produce thirty one fragments ranging from Well, yeah, COVID is ten kilobas pairs. No, it's just bigger than that. Coronavirus is a what, like thirty? Yo yo yo, we're not trying to print any viruses. We're not trying to print any drugs, man. Don't do that shit, man. Uh, we're trying to, we're trying to use biology in order to make sick people healthy. That sounds nice. Ooh, look at this one. This one can do seven thousand base pairs. We don't want a new design from scratch. T N A and RNA, so much effort's been put into this system. Hmm, no. Hmm, only the crappy old ones for sale. Maximum DNA length is seven thousand base pairs. That's pretty good. Oh, it came out this year. Wow, this stuff is like finally possible. Get a fucking quote. I hate that. They're in San Diego. Let's go visit them. Well, they're by Qualcomm. That's where our new office is gonna be. See, I love that everyone, I love that all the bio people are just in San Diego. So we can print the right number of kilobytes, then the question is how much pipetting do I have to do in order to actually turn it into a plasmid? You know? Oh, let's uh, let's order some food. What do y'all think? What kind of food do we want, boys? I know. Ooh, Tandoori Hut is sponsored. Or Hi Pokie. Pop Pie Co. Well, fried chicken. Oh yeah, some tendies. That sounds great. Chicken tenders. We'll search for tenders and see what we get. Buffalo Wild Wings. Roost Republic. Mr. Beast Burger? I didn't know Mr. Beast is franchising out. Wow, that's, these are really bad ratings. Roost Republic has the highest rating. No, like guys, I'm not joking about Mr. Beast Burger. Here, Mr. Beast Burger. Make food on your own? Fuck that. You remember my cooking stream? Ooh, Lefty Chicago Pizza. Oh, they know what I really want. No. Eight spicy roost tenders. Eight crispy roost tenders. No, I don't want any sauce. Get some fries too. Wild wedges. Alright, we're going with the Roost Republic. Eight crispy roost tenders. Oh, they'll be here in no time. That's great. Uh. Place order. Let's go. Add funds, ugh. Apple Pay. Confirm. You wish you lived by the website, right? No, I'm telling you, San Diego's the place to be for this stuff. What's the maladron saying? Frozen tenders and smile face fries. Ah, we got some chicken tenders coming. And some fries. There we go. Oh my god, alright alright, great. Yup 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 yup. Uh, benchtop reagents. See, they're not gonna sell the machines though. They just wanna sell you a service. Thirty two de novo DNA fragments in parallel. Wait. Oh, with the option to stitch together four fragments. I see. Oh, the system can assemble into user supplied proprietary vectors. Oh. Only circle amplification, amplification of the assembled construct on a microgram scale, providing a direct path from assembly to assay. Oh, that's what I'm talking about. Should I just buy this one? Should I buy the one on eBay? Where are they? Well, they're in Texas. Wish they were in San Diego. I'd go visit them. Oh, there's one on eBay for 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 seventeen grand. I don't know, I had to print overnight. Same as a comma. Yes, this is like, we have a big one. Oh, perfect for my smallpox project. Well, my exes live in Texas like from George Strait. The fuck? I don't want my thing connected to the cloud. I'm out on the cloud. Oh, they're running a model like Juicero. I get it. This is this is the Juicero of DNA printers. I was like, how come I can't buy the ink? Oh well. Wait, wait, it's a total scam. It's it's like it's like Zortrax, but instead of getting the software, you upload the thing to them. Yeah, but the problem with the labs is, you know, they're gonna be like, why do you want this? They're gonna ask questions. They're gonna be contact us for pricing. Oh, when I get my DNA, should I open source it? Is is there any reason not to? S G I D N A. But really, these companies raise no money. We should be giving these people money instead of the software. Instead of like Cruz automation, which just throws it away. Can we talk about what's wrong with Google for a second? Wait. That was a totally different set of results than what I just got. I just got a whole set of stupid news articles. The system costs just under Just under, yeah yeah yeah, but it's not the price. It seems like their whole business model. But, ugh, you have to make a positive impact in the world. I'm out. Why do companies say shit like that? Trust me, if you buy a comma two, I don't care if you're making a positive impact in the world or not. I don't give a shit what you're doing. Kilobaser dot com slash shop. Wait. Ooh. Yeah, but oligos sound like small. So they just call it the Kilobaser, which makes me think it can do one kilob. Reagent cartridge holding materials for two hundred bases. The fuck? Fifty euro cents per byte? A scam. Oh my god, the ink, this is so, this is so expensive. Okay, but this does make me think that these things are not that hard to build. Alright, if we could just get around like Okay, serious talk. You know what I want my yeast to synthesize? I want my yeast to synthesize the reagents for my DNA sequencing, right? Then I got just like the A yeast, the G yeast, the the uh, T yeast and the C yeast, and they're all making me making me little reagents. And there's a printer that makes its own ink and I just dump in sugar, you know? You can paste oligos together. Yeah, yeah, that's, I see this. Like, why did this, why is this like, like, like marketed to retards? You know? Anyone who's buying this machine It's chibi OS. Yeah, we should probably, we should probably use a real time apparatus instead of the panda. Um. Can I buy the refills though? What's the best stuff you can currently buy? Yeah, well, that's what I want. Kilobaser. How many, you you don't even tell me how many base pairs. Base pair. No, that's obviously not what I meant. Stupid Google. Hammer wouldn't have done better there though. Here we go. Our reagent cartridges hold reagents for two hundred DNA bases. It can be used for up to two weeks after activation. And costs fifteen thousand euros. Oh, they're in Austria, eh? Hmm, that's better. Can be operated without an internet connection. I know I can outsource my projects to a biology lab, but have you seen me? Look, look, look at the comma two. Have you seen the comma two? The case is three D printed. The case is three D printed in-house, 'cause I hate outsourcing. Look at the three D print. I don't wanna outsource. I don't want other people to control my future. I wanna control my own destiny. It's like five hundred a kilo, I know. Okay, let's look up, let's look up what these reagents are. I wanna, I wanna, I wanna get refills. Yeah, look at this, I can buy refills. Oh. Includes the following base protections. Is this just like, is this like when they try to sell you the gas with the stuff that protects your engine? God damn it. Oh, it's D M T. Wait, is this actually, is it the same D M T? No, it's not the same D M T. You don't even have to print DNA, D M T, wait. Used D M T synthesis. I think this one's actually really easy. Psycho Not Wiki, perfect. Wait, is my food here? No. Where's my chicken? Where's my chicken? This guy's riding a bicycle? Okay, can I not get, can I not get scam drug websites? We gotta figure out. I remember synthesis of DNA oligonucleotides. Does oligo just mean short? Oligomers, eh? The maximum length hardly exceeds two hundred nucleotide residues. How is that thing printing eighteen hundred? Oligo means many, but not as many as poly. I get it. Yeah, I can buy yeast. Look, I can get some yeast off, I can get some yeasts from the supermarket. Does Bio XP thing work differently though? You know what the real troll would be? It's like Juicero where the machine doesn't do anything. They just print them at the Well, yeah, like they sell you a module. I don't even think this machine's a DNA printer. It's like the Juicero doesn't make juice. It's like the Juicero doesn't make juice. It's altered carbon. Ah. No. Huh, probably worth watching. Alright, here we go. I think that that one, I think this is this thing's a scam. I know that they made a synthetic bacteria. Craig Venter, where's that guy? It was like a shittiest bacteria too. What is Craig Venter doing right now? Oh, trying to live forever, I see. Ah, they live in La Jolla and he's an atheist. He has ADHD, oh, and he believes in ADHD, that's too bad. I have ADHD, but I don't believe in it, so it doesn't affect me. We haven't heard about him for a while. How did they synthesize it? Blue Heron. Oh, this is the company that did, alright, so these people are making things, yeah, so Kilobases probably can actually do a kilobase. Think. No, but then we saw what a scam their stupid cartridge that only suppo- that only prints two hundred characters is. Where's the please note the logo will change soon, would you see that? Sort of single use fluidic chip. Yield, three hundred pMoles. Inline triddle sensor. What's a triddle sensor? I don't think these things are real. I need argon or nitrogen. Affordable price makes it accessible. Look at that. That's so crappy, it's a twenty four, it's only twenty four base pairs, I was promised a kilobase. Ah. I'm gonna build this, but instead of any lab professional, it's gonna be any rando to create DNA. And I'm gonna get rid of the word empowers and I'm gonna use the word let's. Yeah. Are they looking for my food? Oh no, the guy's on a bike, he doesn't even have a horn. Kilobaser probably has the cheapest reagents, so is it more expensive reagents? How is Bio XP getting more uh Oh yeah, because it's a scam, you have to send it out. Yeah, I'm coming. There you go, my food, I'll be back. Hell yeah, boys. We got chicken. Tenders. Oh yeah. Oh yeah, buddy. Oh, these are good. Mmm. Great choice. Made the choice to get chicken tenders. It was a great one. Oh, they even included napkin. And fries. Oh. Tenders and fries. Alright. So I kinda think this thing is a scam. It's Juicero, this is actually Juicero. Enter your DNA sequence using the touchscreen. Wait, seriously though? I don't like sauce, okay? I don't like sauce. Some people like sauce, I don't. Thank you, I'm glad you like new song. Wait, alright, so this was the company that made all the uh, we just gotta figure out what machine they're using. Non-complex sheets under two point seven kilobases. All goes again. What's a non-complex sequence? Oh yeah. There's actually something called DNA chisel in Python. How cool is that? Let me start that. Um, they talk about it in the uh reverse engineering blog posts. Ah, complexity of sequence include is that supposed to be the word stretches? God. I know you got, I know you people think like you know George you're so arrogant for thinking you know anything about biology. But like, I know it spells stretches. Since gene strands are assembled using DNA oligos, oh, I get it. Two point five minutes per base. I need to fucking stitch them together, this shit's insane. There has to be a better way. Is the whole DNA synthesis works? When we look up the um I'm not trying to do no find your place yet. Like okay, so when we look at that, what was that thing called? P glow? Okay, so this is a, this is a plasma. Like instead, I like to just be able to print that. If I could print my own plasma and then stick them in stuff? That'd be sick. No, I'm not putting any weird shit in my body. If I make legal drugs using my stuff, I will check it on a mass spectrometer first. Lab acts DNA synthesizers. They really just make oligos and stitch them together? At least they have a price. No, this one's the best one. I mean, if you accept that all you're making is oligos and those Bio XP ones are a scam. I also look at these people's manual and I trust them. I'm not sure why, but there's something about this system that seems like it's not a scam. Insertion of a DNA sequence inside a plasma. I need to have a talk with them or like, oh, I can buy a kilogram of this shit. Buy a kilogram of each base pair. Yeah, looks like fuck you if you don't know how to work, that's right. The scales, wow. Look, they're like talking about reasonable things. There are six reservoirs that may be used for adenoids. I can get specials. Yeah, this is the only one of these that's real. It's a liquid gal boil off system. Is that how I get liquid nitrogen? I mean, I guess I can get liquid nitrogen by just compressing air. Nitrogen's gonna freeze a lot quicker than oxygen, CO two and shit. Wait, no, CO two is gonna, CO two is dry ice. It's not that much shit, it's weird. Nitrogen maker. How sweet is this? If I want nitrogen, I just have to buy a nitrogen maker. Man, I love S- I love China. Look, I just tell you right away, high purity nitrogen gas generator making machine. Can I buy an oxygen making machine? No, I don't believe in this, cuz this one tells me how pure my nitrogen is. Ninety five percent, ugh. Oh, I can make No, I have to have manganese dioxide and hydrogen proxide. I wanna put electricity and sugar in and I wanna get out anything I want. I kinda want one of these though. They sell, I was looking before during coronavirus and you couldn't buy any of them, cuz everyone was freaking out. It has a battery. Thirty to ninety percent. I could set up an oxygen bar. Why would Twitch block? I want tendies right fucking now. Remember these things? Well all I know is cuz there's no hype around making nitrogen. They're probably banned in California. No, I don't like that one, it tells me what it's for. This one's better, it doesn't tell you what it's for. It just tells you what it does. Oh my god, wait a second. Ninety nine point nine nine nine, ninety nine point nine nine eight. Alright, we've eaten too many tenders. Do you have like the nitrogen making machine for more pure nitrogen? Cuz I feel like all this thing does is pipetting. Oh my god, that's never gonna fit in my apartment. Minimum CPG for synthesis. If using the fritted plates, oh. Do you wanna use the fritted plates or not? These things really seem as crappy as three D printers. Oh, the tendies company in California. So that Parker nitrogen generators. I'm gonna have to buy synthesis fritted plates. Deep well plates. For Peter, pipette. What's a CPG? I kinda feel that all these things do is like, if you want an A, they pipette in the A. That old Delmon. Well, they can have Windows ninety eight, Windows me, Windows N T four point oh. Where's Newark, California? Kinda feel like this company doesn't exist anymore. Kinda feel like this company doesn't exist anymore. They were too honest in their marketing material. Ew, it's up there. Check out the visual basic UI. Loading oligos. So this one like synthesizes a whole bunch at once? This is really the best way to do this? And they just stitch them together? It's so shitty. We have the Gibson assembly method. Wait, Codex DNA? I've seen Codex DNA. They make bio shits. Daniel, who was? What is he doing now? Are we still the CTO? It requires that the DNA fragments contain twenty to forty base pair overlaps with adjacent DNA fragments. DNA fragments are mixed with a cocktail three M zones along with other, well, this just looks like a lot of pipetting. That's who I Googled before? No, I Googled Venter, but, oh, yeah, I Googled Daniel Gibson and I got the, the, the baseball player, basketball player. Some sports ball. Synthesized two hundred and thirty-six genome segments. That doesn't seem like too many. We were unable to obtain them from commercial DNA suppliers. Because of the complex. It did a synthesized sequence which facilitate chemical synthesis. Everyone seems to be using chemical synthesis. Endonuclease restriction. Oh, I see. That was the sequence they couldn't use because the restriction enzyme they're using in assembly. That makes sense. I don't know, I don't know that much about that stuff. We're, we're trying to figure out what, what, what good sequencer I can buy for cheap. You know, so we can make, we can make plasmids in our room. But did they make these bacterias work or not? Here we go. Materials and methods, that's what I'm interested in. Pimp master shaft. Thank you for gifting subs. You know, if you gift a sub, you get to ask one question. Genome partitioner algorithm, eh? Order from two commercial suppliers. Why don't you tell me the commercial suppliers? Can we summarize methods and caveats? Oh, perfect. I love cookies. ability to read DNA is better than to write it. Petabasis, yeah. Can I pass a high school physics exam? I think so. You can give me a high school physics question, I'll try to solve it for you. But you're just a subscriber, you didn't gift a sub. Gift a sub and I'll solve your physics question. By the way, I really appreciate you if you subscribe and I don't appreciate you if you don't subscribe. That's just how it is. Well, you see, the beauty of smart water is it has purely balanced pH. How many streams of income do I have? Whenever I need money, I just look under the bed. Scam water, what do you mean? Look, I drink this water and I show that I'm more rich than people who are drinking other cheaper water. Cram that gram. Thank you for difting a sub. Would you like to ask a question? We don't have any green tea here. I'm moving into a new apartment where I'm gonna build my bio lab. Kepler's equations for like orbital mechanics or high school physics. Adapted Google. Or if you let me use Python, I might be able to derive orbital mechanics. But I need Python and I need something to do like differentiation for me and shit. Wait, monster hunter unite. Did, did I miss any questions? Told her she could live with me if she need to. I got a compound. Did I miss questions from gifters? Nadi Odin, are you a gifter? Oh, what, can we repeat a gifter question? Monster hunter unite. Do I think Ross Ulbricht should get a pardon? Well. I'd have to look more into the case. If the case were just for drug shit, then yes. If the, if they have a reasonable case for uh, uh, murder for hire, then no, but I believe the government didn't try that case. They just tried the drug case, so yeah, pardon. Ross Ulbricht, Ross Ulbricht saved lives, you know? Think of how many people bought some like sketch shit on the streets and now didn't buy it on the streets. They bought it on a nice, safe internet website where violence is impossible. What is Lagrange's constant? I don't know. You're not even a subscriber, you don't get a question. Did I miss any other subscriber questions? I like the velocity. He needs to stay in orbit at an altitude of a hundred fifty miles, um. Four hundred fifty miles from the earth? Yeah, I could, I could probably do that. I mean, all I would have to do is figure out, I just have to figure out the acceleration. Uh, and then I could work out the centrifugal. Yeah, I could do that. Oh, pimp master chef. Do you use GraphQL for your APIs? No. I don't know. I know what it is. Gonna use it. Yeah. Universal gravitation. I have to look, I don't know big G off the top of my head. But yeah. The mass of the earth, like the distance. Um, okay, ooh, 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 perfect. Oh, yes. Column synthesized oligos. How did they figure out G? I mean, can't you figure it out if you know like? I guess that's how I figured out the mass of the earth, I don't know. The line's so blurry. Oligos synthesis has a long history. We could do music back in livestream, so that. I gotta stop eating these fries. Um, based on oligos synthesis. Yeah, yeah, I've definitely read this before. Array based. Light activated chemistry is interesting. Ah, it's easy. It's shit like this, yeah. You know, that was one of my early projects, hacking DLP. Well, this is exciting. Oh, this is such good paper, Chris. Oligos produced from microarrays are free for waste management. Haha, now we're getting into good prices. Okay, small sets of oligos provide the raw substrate for constructing larger synthetic fragments. A variety of methods collectively determined gene synthesis. The first synthetic genes were short. Cobine covers used T four DNA ligase. To seal chemically synthesized oligos together. In litigation based, ligation based approaches, um. So it really seems like all they do is make oligos and then stick them together? Did they not say here how long oligos are? Okay, two hundred. Two hundred makes sense because that's exactly what the cartridge they were selling on uh, on Kila Basin. I, I really think those bio ones are scam and it's just, uh, just Sarah. So they sell you the machine for cheap. Oh my god. And then material for two hundred basis. Fifty cents a base pad, that's pathetic. Well, they're trying to sell based on privacy. Anything useful from the links earlier in chat? I don't know, let's save it. Look stupid. I don't know, no, I don't think. Why are you guys doing numbers? Hey, guys, the second we get popular, it's over. The second we get popular and there is some like hit piece in Business Insider about me, I'm never streaming again. That's right. Take that, Business Insider. One bite of tendy, one bite, one bite. One bite of candy, one bite, one bite. That's right. Not predicting how Paul Muntz will put a media. That's why we use Azure, Microsoft would never cancel me because they disagree with my views, right? Oh, I don't know. But. What do I do with my power once I get verified? Slide into the D M's with that check mark, you know? Oh. Well. Who doesn't suck? I'll switch to whoever doesn't suck. Whose D M's? I don't know, does Taylor Swift have D M's? No, I just wanna hang out, I had a dream one night that I was sitting in an apartment in Mexico City and it was completely empty. And it was just me and Taylor Swift sitting on the floor. I never felt so seen. I I've never met, I've never met Taylor Swift. No, we were sitting, honestly, we were sitting, it was like it was like the it was like the final scene in um Adventureland. But like without the, you know, the 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 embrace. It was just sitting and being understood. Would happen to small, this is small. It's amazing that this thing works, I have so many windows open. Oh yeah, alright, special special just for you guys on the uh on the Twitch, alright, so this is this is this is the song that I like actually worked hard on. But I did retweet something I made six years ago, it's called Otto Swedish Fish. I don't think Taylor dreams about me. I'm okay with that though, I'm not trying to be creepy or anything, man. This was my attempt at cloud rap. Tom Cruise, B two zero C. Young Cruise, yo, that's a good name. Listen, listen to the. Both the last verse here, I really, I really, it's a good anecdote. By the way, this is completely copyright me, so you don't have to block this out. Just 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 listen to this. Um no, but I can actually rap. So don't worry, it's not all, it's not all Otto Swedish Fish. I'm lazy making album. I don't like the portals for me. It's bad enough, I did that stupid South by Southwest talk and now I get emails from people, it's like bro, I feel like we're on the same harmonic wavelength, I totally wanna jailbreak the simulation too. Did you ever try five M E O D M T? Yo, I went down to Peru and I licked a toad and I saw the truth about the universe. You know those kind of people? Do Alex Jones, you guys heard my Alex Jones impression? I hear about Facebook image, Google CIA conspiracy. And that's why you gotta gotta buy a product, cause when they come for you, man, you're gonna have super male vitality, you're gonna have you're gonna you're gonna have big muscles and you're gonna you're gonna you can fight to fight the global, fight the deep state, man, fight the fight the you know, the the CIA MK Ultra, they're coming into your they're coming into your brain, man, you know, we got we got documents, man, we got proof. You're just gonna find out right after this ad for 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 ultimate male vitality enhancement, it makes your dick this much bigger. Think of how much deeper you could go, it's this much bigger, man, the CIA won't know what they're fucking with if you got a dick this. I think the boat has just could be eaten at chess, when she says she went to two thousand, then she'll be even pretty badly. Alright. I've listened to some of the portal. Um. Some of the some of the episodes are good, I don't think it's for me, you know, I'm not I'm not like I'm not like Peter Thiel. Uh. I'm not a conservative, I'm a progressive. I I don't mean that in the political sense. Uh I mean it in the sense that maybe I'm a yeah. Like. You you know, you you read the uh Unabomber manifesto, it's very conservative. Uh he has a conservative idea, we should we should smash the technological industrial state, um. And go back to a state of nature, this is a fundamentally conservative idea. Um maybe the progressive idea is more think like accelerationism, right? Um I like, you know, always be a progressive, if someone ever asks, like, I'm a progressive, man. You know, just progressive, sounds good. And just do like, do you believe in progress? Yeah, I'm progressive, man. You know, I ju- I just wonder when everyone woke up one day and decided that politics was something to take capital S seriously. Um. No, and I I do think I do think uh at least what I've seen Peter Thiel, it's it's like conservative. Uh. You know, I I think I think Neo Reaction is a progressive ideology. Hmm, I'll become a sub if I take this IQ test, I'm gonna take an IQ test. Uh I did watch Canada, yeah. Good troll with the Business Insider. Wait, wait, there's no fucking way that's a real link, this this that's funny. I'll just say, um, it had, you know, it just just I've been reading unqualified reservations, hmm. That's a machine gun Kelly, man, it's not my bars. Alright, we're really, we're really getting distracted here. We can make five hun- two hundred base pair oligos. George is losing it, oh my god. Yo, no, if I make a Drake diss track, I was thinking about, I was thinking about it over break and like my bars just need to be so tight, you know what I mean? And I gotta sound good, I need to hire a producer if I wanna make a Drake diss track. You know what, I think it is meditation time, I agree with that, I was started meditating this morning and then I got distracted.
And again, it's very soft. With the voice of your mind. And rather than try to approach the breath as though from a point outside it. Just let it appear in the space of awareness. You don't need to lean into it. Or attempt to get closer to it. Just receive it. And as with the breath, so too with other sensations. And sounds. Just let them appear on their own. Notice that they do in fact appear all on their own. And by appearing, they articulate this space of consciousness. Just rest as that space.
Alright, I feel calm. This paper is really good. Alright. Oh, I have to start OBS now and let's summarize what we learned. We had to corona rebound. Produce oligos of around two hundred base pairs. Uh. No, I got a I got a cloth mask now. I decided to stop caring about the fact that they probably develop micro mold and make you more sick, that's a whole lot more comfortable. You know? So, it also has the added advantage of it does nothing. So, yeah. This is this is the, you know. Giving up on that crap, uh. You know, you could you could you only have so much political capital in the world and you gotta pick your battles, when everyone around you is acting like morons. You know, sometimes you just gotta like act like a moron too, like it's alright. You know, and you gotta you gotta choose your battles, man, you gotta choose your battles. That's right. You know right wingers, how you think the left wing is deluded and believes dumb shit? I mean, that's true. I got news for you guys too. Don't worry about coronavirus. I think I already had it. Choose right or you'll get censored, even this is like a You know, oh my god, like right when people go off free speech, free speech, have you ever tried to moderate anything? Like people in the comma discord are like, you can't kick me out, I have free speech. What's the X K C D about that? You know, did the government take your rights or did some dude say you're an asshole and kick you out of his private community? No. Um certainly not cloth masks, I'm I'm still very confident cloth masks do nothing. But. Again, you gotta choose your battles, man, you gotta choose your battles. Surgical masks are better than cloth masks. Uh still likely to be useless but I'm not as confident about that say I have ninety percent confidence in cloth masks being useless. Fifty percent in surgical masks being useless and then once you get to N ninety five P one hundreds. Ninety percent confidence in P one hundreds being useful. Alright but then all the people oh my god wait could we just could we just make fun of some commenters I love making fun of commenters let's make fun of commenters. I thought I meditated I thought I was calm I thought we weren't gonna do this shit like make fun of commenters. Oh you know oh my god no you know what I was thinking I read some comments one of those comments like you have to pay attention to how you use your voice you shouldn't use your voice like that bro do I come to your house and tell you how to use your lawnmower? Do I tell you about like you know how you shouldn't be mowing the lawn that close to the flowers? No cuz it's not my lawnmower it's your lawnmower. But caring about other people means wearing a mask there is evidence to support that. Alright alright there there's evidence to support that that caring about other people means wearing a mask that's right there's evidence evidence they say evidence. What a fucking absolute idiot I have never seen someone more self-centered fuck all you stand for. This guy likes lies and tyranny. Yeah cuz I stand for truth and freedom. I miss bagel gourmet too I do. I miss bagel gourmet too. John McAfee two bueno yo I have never done bath salts and I've never killed my neighbor real talk. I wanna get rich like him in Bang and thanks bro it's pretty cool. I have heard this. It's good to know yeah G is responsible Pfizer vaccine they're great people the M B A guys at Moderna and AstraZeneca and you can tell by their part papers too. Be careful what you say buddy Business Insider is gonna come for you. I don't know I don't know why people get shields guys two plus two equals five. Two plus two equals five come on and you know it's true man it's true you know all those all those people trying to tell you that two plus two equals four it's lies man two plus two equals five are we gonna get commenters we're gonna come in and say no but we know two plus two equals four and here's the paper to prove it. Yeah oh join a Lucas he did uh there's on the there's on kamikaze. Uh I got a couple of mansions still I don't have any manners you got a couple of ghostwriters but you it don't actually matter. Oh I should use my voice more responsibly that's a good point that's a good point you should use your lawnmower more responsibly don't run over the neighbor's dog with your lawnmower. Bro as long as I'm not your neighbor you do you do you man you do you freedom. The particles of the virus are a thousand times smaller than gaps of the mask yeah no shit. Two times three equals chicken yo alright no we're really we're really you know I ate that I ate the chicken tenders and it's like fucking with my head man. Should've gotten healthier food. Oh my god how many people argue about fucking masks oh guys masks work I was wrong. Uh they are very important show how much you care wear a mask today is that better? What's that old saying uh if you find yourself in Soviet Russia and Stalin is your leader you can't say bad things about Stalin you can't say we should have zero Stalins right but you can say things like we should have fifty Stalins. Yeah yeah we should have Stalin is so great we should have fifty Stalins there should be a Stalin in every neighborhood. Thanks for the apology George. Let's see let's see here how how am I gonna respond to my my Business Insider article? Um I'm very sorry to all the people I offended uh uh you know uh uh it's very bad what I did. I shouldn't have done it it's the current year and I've grown a lot since I did bad thing X. Uh I'm prostrating myself in front of this struggle session so that you guys can uh correct my bad uh behavior and shun or allow me back into society as you see fit. I am at the mercy of this court of public opinion. Why does anyone take this all this shit seriously? Oh I made a severe and continuous lapse in my judgment and I don't expect to be forgiven. You know what the sad thing is you can't apologize anymore when you're actually sorry. Yo shit's funny man. These are unprecedented times oh. Free tea hot. I don't know I just I just I just I just I just can't today I just I just can't. It's 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 so hard to take the like I don't know if people just get signal boosted who take like all the wacko shit seriously you know. Well is there more wacko shit in the world than ever before do we just see it more probably just see it more. Gotta go back to when there were only seven TV networks. I represent you do I I don't represent you was I elected? No do you pay me money? Not you you're not a subscriber I do represent the subscribers if you were a subscriber in saying that your voice would have more worth. I love the new Taylor Swift songs Evermore is an incredible album uh we were like the mall before the internet it was the one place to be mischief gift wrapped suburban dreams. Well that's the problem I read this thing which is like you don't get how like one percent of the people are like ninety percent of the comments on the internet. Uh and like what do you do about that? I don't know like you know whenever whenever oh whenever I get called you know I love getting telemarketer calls I love telemarketer calls. Uh you know I like to I like to like ask these people about like you know their life and like whether you know when you were like do you remember being six? Who'd you have who'd you have in first grade? You know you really like build up some empathy with the person as you're six and you know your first grade teacher will say Mrs Whitlock you know Miss Whitlock asks you hey what do you wanna be when you grow up? Did 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 you say you know a spam caller did you say a telemarketer is that what you said? Oh you wanted to be a basketball player well what happened to that dream man? No I'm trying I'm trying I'm trying I'm trying I'm trying to help you out here you know? Put this phone down quit this job grab a ball go down to your local basketball court let's play some ball you know? Trying to help you out I'm trying to make you achieve your dreams. What did I wanna be I wanna be a computer programmer. Alright I gotta close you guys you guys are too distracting. Some of us are trying to study here. It's a unit. How do you know this shit's even real and they're not just sending you water? Why stringency ligation based synthesis reduce error rates? Because sequences with errors are less likely to hybridize and ligate. What's PCA? PCA based? Pollimera cycling assembly. These polymerase to extend overlapping oligos into a double stranded fragment by cycling in a non exponential process. Both ligation and PCA along on PCR amplify full length. Hybridization based error filtration. Better assembly techniques exist for larger assemblies. PCR amplification increase the concentration of the oligos before assembly. Error corrected them by hybridization to reverse complementary oligo so that's clever look at what they did they made both sides and they stuck them together. And design protein sequences computationally to avoid mis-hybridizations of the sequences okay that's great this is like when you gotta encode your shell code man. You know gotta encode your shell code. Gotta make sure your shell code doesn't have too many null bytes in it. What's Sanger sequencing? Sanger? Sure I've like looked at all these before these names just don't stick with me. Error correcting techniques ooh errors. Using column based. Not array based. Oh see this is my dream. Alright so the best thing we can get Oligos are up to a hundred seventy bases in length. I mean we don't like special orders but you see yeah. I mean the problem is all of these percents multiply that thing about thirteen percent makes a lot of sense. Fully synthetic yeast G no. Well so we have twenty base pairs. That's huge you're in termites wow it's okay it's really easy to get a DNA sequence that no one's ever made before. It would make sense that a lot of them are you I don't know. But it would make sense that a lot of them are, I don't know, that's probably stupid. Like how much does this stuff compress is kind of the question. Hmm, cuter fry maximum compression of human genome. Can you just tell me how big it is? Hmm, I'll probably beat this with a uh. Here we go. Try transformer on human genome. Do they, can they just tell me? Four hundred to one. Four hundred from what? One base is encoded with up to one point three bit. Why isn't it two? I don't know. Why would anyone like do this stuff by hand? Just as long as think of all the books writing on chess openings, you know? Alright, so what's the name of that stupid process that assembles them? Just named after some dude. There's something like put them together. No, um. Only go assembly into gene. I'm gonna check the chat, you guys remember what it was called? We were looking at it before. DNA is not the future of the of of data storage because it costs ten cents to write. Oh, we got slow mode. Oh, 'cause you fucks are talking about politics, yo. If we'll talk about, you know, you know my position on, oh my god, I can't believe I open chat, I'm drawn back into this shit. If you wanna talk about politics, talk about politics circa, you know, nineteen hundred. Don't talk about the names of any of those, you know. People. Lizards. I was asking you guys a question, you don't even know it. Oh, wow, merge chance info open pilot. Wow. Damn, we do well. I like that, hey, if someone makes a pull request to open pilot with that badge at the bottom of open pilot, I'll merge it. God, like, yeah, I really, I don't wanna talk about Voldemort's rise to power. Uh, it's much more interesting talk about, you know, the history of 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 dark wizards, the methods they use. Or the inventor of the Avada Kedavra curse, you know? No. I have been researching what it felt like to live through the late eighties and early nineties in Russia. Alright, so this designs the oligos. Alright, bye bye chat. You guys are terrible. Ah, Gibson assembly. Yo, who wants to hack the Gibson? To find, you know, it's gonna be smart. Let's go with one seventy. Let's say we have twenty base pair overlaps, so let's say one fifty times fifteen. Okay. Hmm, alright, alright, this is interesting. See if any of these things actually work. Major stakeholders, bunch of fucking loser biotech companies, that's kind of the problem. You know? 'Cause they're not going consumer, see? Open chat backup for this one. Just imagine making consumer biotech. Like instead of trying to sell to labs or sell to experimenters or like, you know, okay, the people make the DNA sequen- sequencing machines or like or like the tier ones, right? You know, they thought, who thought it could be done for self-driving cars? But, you know, we're out, we're doing it. And do the comma, and it's comma dot bio, it really is. Um, you know, Theranos was a scam and made technology that didn't work and partnered with a lot of companies. I'm gonna partner with nobody and sell you thousand dollar DNA printers. You see what I'm saying? One thousand dollars buy a uh, we can't call him comma, I can't call him comma one, comma two, what are we gonna call? It went slow mode, you can't move slow mode. Are people spamming? I don't know, you can make whatever you want. Why go to the store and buy a Moxil, buy buy penicillin when I could just modify some yeast to make it? Are people spamming? If people are spamming, maybe slow mode comes back. What's a deliverable intermediate for Theranos? Not because they were scammed. Make you a little box that can print DNA. And we're gonna sell to everybody at a low price just 'cause we can. Why aren't there so many normies in chat? You know, it's already getting ruined, we don't even need Business Insider to ruin it. What do you mean? What the D A is not, D A is not gonna have a problem with that, are you kidding about that? They could use it to make drugs, just just penicillin, that's right. Only legal drugs. We'll upload all the DNA sequences to the cloud and check to make sure that they don't produce illegal drugs. Ooh, life after Google, oh, I didn't know there was a book. Hmm, the fall of big data and the rise of the blockchain economy. Uh, no. No. Let's read the reviews though. The shape of things to come. Google Marxism, oh my god. Don't judge a book by its cover, but you can certainly judge one by its title. Probably halfway through, he's trying to shield for you to buy chain link. Buy some link, bro. Buy some link. All sweet merge chains. Uh, I have, I'm gonna work. I'm gonna work now. Um, alright. Microchip based. Light directed. They my tiny crappy oligos, eh? Synthons. Hmm, genitalium. That's actually an S T D. Can't believe it, this is act- this is actually how they make these things. Eh. I'm the only one who sees San Francisco and thinks that place is disgusting. I'm just, I'm grossed out by like the place, like I just look at it, I'm like, oh my god. What 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 would, you know? It's like, remember, like you went to like a house to party at in the eighties and like it was this shit in the eighties and people were doing cocaine on silver plates in the bathroom and then you like go back there and now you're like, oh my god. We give you the urban stream, urban stream coming. Yeah, who still desires going to Silicon Valley? I'm sorry, but some people destroyed it, man. No, not more of that to come everywhere. San Francisco is an incredibly corrupt city. Uh, run by terrible people. Who, you know? These problems have existed throughout history. It's just San Francisco had a lot of wealth. These problems have always come to places with wealth. Trust me, Skokie, Illinois is not gonna have these problems. Skokie, eh? Yo, I think I almost went to a party in Skokie once, no, that was Gary, Indiana. Oh, this is getting slow, hope my computer's finally getting slow. I'm using all my eight gigabytes of RAM. Gotta close some of my thirty bajillion windows. Oh no, I gotta close some windows, there's too many windows, boys. Ugh, I need sixteen gigs of RAM. Buy a new MacBook, need sixteen gigs. I had a lot of windows open. Yeah, it's fast again. I usually use Safari, but I don't clear the history of Safari, I only clear the history of Chrome for streaming. Oh my god, see if they get acquired. Oh god, it's all such scams. Can I make a cell scopes? You get him, please. You get him. Hey, 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 I'm rooting for the police, man. Gotta go get the bad guys, you know, I watch C S I, I know the police are the good guys, that's right. Yeah, San Diego's a nice place. They they haven't had any encounters yet with the police. To be fair, that's true for most of California. But what I can say about San Diego is I haven't had any bad encounters with homeless people either. Like there's homeless people, but look, man, you wanna sleep on the street, that's not my problem, go for it. You wanna run around screaming at me? Follow me around, now we got a problem. And that's what happened in San Francisco. Shithole. I was gonna run for mayor. Um, before I decided to leave, I mean, you kind of get a choice, you kind of get, you can fight or exit, and I chose exit. Uh, I was gonna run for mayor. Um, my model was nice. Uh, we have the, you know, we're gonna use the Triforce, the Triforce, do you guys know the Triforce? Did I ever explain my mayoral campaign to you guys? So we're gonna, you know, the Triforce, right? So, see this triangle here? This triangle represents housing, 'cause we're gonna have housing. This triangle here represents infrastructure, we're gonna have public transportation that runs twenty four seven. By the way, I didn't tell you guys my answer to housing, which is this one up here, my answer to housing is yes. My answer to infrastructure is yes. Uh, we're gonna have BART that runs twenty four seven. We're gonna have, we're gonna have everything, uh, you know, working, right? We're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna fix up the city, you know? This one over here, parks. My signature thing is we're gonna turn Market Street into a park. Respect to Leslie Nope, I stole that from you. Respect to Leslie Nope, I stole that from you. Um so we have, we have housing, yes. Infrastructure, yes. Parks, yes. Alright, you see this upside down triangle in the middle? That's homelessness. We're gonna get a bus, we're gonna fill it with liquor and weed and heroin. And we're gonna say everyone, free ride, free liquor, free weed, and it goes to Stockton. And then we're gonna put a two hundred dollar toll on the Bay Bridge if you wanna come back that way. And then, and then. I have a plan for crime, I have a plan for crime. I would love to see uh some some candidates use my plan for crime. We are going to make crime illegal. We're gonna make crime illegal. Why? The bus to Stockton? It's cheap. Make crime illegal, that's right. I just, I would have loved, oh my god, like how great would have it been? If I sent, like if I was in the mayoral debate for San Francisco and I said all this stuff. You know, look, and like it's all, it's all positive stuff, right? Like everyone, everyone should be happy with this. It's, look, it's an optional bus ride, you don't have to get on the bus, it's not like some terrible thing. We're just gonna, you know, what are we gonna do with crime? We're gonna make it illegal, right? What is your plan for crime? London Breed, can you tell me about your plan for crime? And she'll ramble on for like five minutes and you ask me my plan for crime, we're we're gonna make it illegal. No, like when people do crime, it's gonna be illegal. And then, you know, they're gonna, they're gonna, you know, it's illegal. I've had a cough ever since I got coronavirus. Cost is going down. I think we could, does does a boat go to Stockton? Can we get a boat that goes to Stockton? Yo, let's let's get a uh let's get one of those riverboats that used to go up and down the Mississippi, you know? Oh my god, yes, we can take a boat. I actually sailed. Uh. I believe it was to right here. Um. Yeah, maybe it was even further. Where's ephemeral aisle? We sailed there, I think it's here. What's it, was it more of a protected kinda thing? Get how far, where's Frank's tract? We sailed up from Berkeley, up around here. Oh yeah, no, we stayed in Pittsburgh. Wow, it really was far. I don't know, it's in here, yes, right here. Right here, Mandeville Point. Yeah. We went exploring over here. Alternative, what if we make crime legal? Well, I think that's San Francisco's current approach, and I I don't think it's working that well. But, you know. Fear us all, some things just shouldn't be crimes. If you're not trolling, you really need to spend less time on the internet, that's a good point. Who takes the internet seriously? Who goes on the internet, you know? You ever seen like a page by like a Karen? Or the kinda people who write Yelp comments, man? Oh yo, I deleted it from my Instagram. But my my, I had a brief feud with United Airlines, but my feud with United Airlines is, you know, they're scumbags, but did anyone think they weren't scumbags? Um oh also, don't fly on a seven thirty-seven Max. You can read, you can read about what their fix was. Well, I had to delete cuz it's negative, man. We only wanna put positive vibes into the world. My god. What I say about the names? I don't wanna hear Joe's name, I don't wanna hear Donald's name. I don't wanna hear any other names, man. So dumb. I'm six foot two. Oh my god, I can't believe, you guys are the worst chat, you know? I open you, I open you and I get distracted, ugh. Who's over chat? Alright, I think we might be done with today's stream. I think what we've learned is that none of this shit's real. And it seems like the best way to synthesize DNA is this. But it shouldn't be expensive. I'm really not sure this thing's a DNA printer. Cuz like, it does seem like I have to like It, they like send me a thing which is custom for my DNA, it's literally juicer. Uh. These people are smaller than comma. Enzymatic approach, see? Part of the problem is they're using chemical. Approaches. I mean, it's a reduce, right? Like you do the C, you do that synthesis and it's a, you do like a reduce, right? You run a map reduce on your DNA. I want the machine to go beyond just a DNA printer too. I want it to do all the pipetting and the plasma tran- and the plasmid transfiction and stuff. But you, I wanna, you buy like cheap things that can be made in bulk with chemical processes. It's like your aim, can you just slide it in? They aren't big companies either. Transform. That means to put it in the vector? One day I'll know what a vector is and I won't just say those words. Alright. I feel like I understand how DNA synthesis works. Um. I mean, there has to be a reason why it costs this much. Like we should look more into how to actually do this stuff. I might build one of these machines. Alright. Can I synthesize it? What if I just pipette? Can I synthesize it with a pipette and a bunch of those little, what are those little doohickeys called? If I open chat, are you guys gonna be useful or useless? There's too many people, you know what? I have a way to make chat useful. Oh, I love this way of making chat useful, that's right, subscriber only chat, oh perfect. I remember this from back in the day. Cuz then we don't have people saying, do you plan on listing your company in the stock market? Do you even invest, bro? Just buy Bitcoin and wait. Oh, I'm in the just chatting section, oh. Yeah, I don't know. Um. Catalyzed condensation reaction. Chat didn't get better. Yeah, I know, but at least these people paid me money. You know, it's so sad that like when I see something like this. Like, I don't know if the world was always like this, but when I see something like we are providing one billion base pairs of DNA to Kinko BioWorks to enable their strain foundry, BioWorks three, in a collaboration with Microsoft research and the University of Washington, our Ola Guides are being used as a data storage tool. Like. I just know what complete nutter bullshit this is. You know? And it's, it's so sad. Like it's, it's so, it's so sad, like like who would, who would write this? You know? The thought of actually using this stuff for data storage is unbelievably stupid. Right, like it's not really being used as a data storage tool. But unless you understand, like, not even this stuff, look, I I I know very little bio, but is anything that costs ten cents per two bits to write a feasible data storage format? No, that's so fucking stupid. Right, but you know, here we are and people write that and like uh to be fair, this is these guys' blog, like, you know. It's so, it's so sad, it's so sad. Why do you say it's really only one bit per base pair? No, that's not right. Uh just cuz C has to be paired with G N A with T. Figure out why that's wrong. Right? There's the five end, prime end to three prime end. Right, imagine a binary code where zero has to be paired with one. Well, that doesn't store zero bits of information, it's still, you know, your zeros and ones can still be flipped, right? The orientation matters. Yeah, biology uses base four. Or something like Q A M two, right? Inkjet printers are little pipettes, man. I also think that yeah, like all this stuff in bio, you don't need, it doesn't need to be done on anywhere near the size and scale that it is. Right? I don't care if I'm producing ten thousand of the thing or ten of the thing, it doesn't matter. Right, why am I pipetting at a human scale? Microfluidics, bro. How do inkjet printers work? You know, what's an inkjet? Inkjet printers are microfluidics. Can you explain pipetting to a noob? No, I don't know how to pipette, I've never pipated shit in my life. Alright guys. I think that's today's stream. I'm gonna take a nap, I think it's nap time. Uh I think we've made some good progress, we learned how DNA synthesis works. Um. Yeah. So. DNA synthesis makes these little shits? Actually, I wanna add one more note. Cuz something really clarified it to me, um. Size limited by Size limit is five. Alright, cool. Thank you all for watching. We're gonna do something about chat. I know I've said that, remember when I used to say that? Remember when I was serious about doing something about chat? And then nothing happened. Yeah. Stay woke, everybody, stay woke. Thank you. Good night.